...of Emmitsburg meeting for November 6, 2017. At this time, I'll ask everyone to please either silence or turn off their cellphone in respect to the decorum of our meeting. And now at this time, I'll ask everyone to please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so some agenda items, just to kind of quickly press through. Our next meeting for the Parks and Recreation Committee will be on November 21st at 7:30 PM, and it'll occur here. The Christmas tree lighting ceremony will occur on December 4th at 6:00 PM on the square, Mr. Mayor, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Great, okay, looking forward to it. Our next town council meeting will follow that on Tuesday, December 5th, pending the approval of the board, because we're adjusting it one day. And that addresses our future meetings listed. Any other future meetings to speak of at this time? No? Mr. Ritz, nothing? Okay, very good. Okay. The mayor has pressed me a few times, and he has asked that we bump an agenda item forward, and we've been asked to allow President Traynor to come forward. Brigadier General President, is that how we address you, sir?
About Tim.
Yeah, very good, okay. To speak, sort of a welcoming statement, or I guess an introductory statement, from the university and his new role as the full-time president. Mr. Mayor?
Commissioners, good evening to everybody out there in TV land, and everybody here. It's my pleasure to introduce Tim Traynor, Dr. Tim Traynor, retired brigadier general, was most recently the dean and chief academic officer at West Point before retiring after 33 years in the Army. Dr. Traynor graduated the Bachelor in Science from the United States Military Academy, then the Fuqua, let's remember that, School of Business at Duke, MBA, PhD, industrial engineering from North Carolina State. As an engineer officer in the United States Army, Dr. Traynor went on to serve in operational assignments around the world, including Germany, Honduras, Fort Bragg, North Carolina, Fort Riley, Kansas, Sarajevo, Bosnia, and deployed to Basra, Iraq in the summer of 2007. Worked with the UK-led provincial reconstruction team in the helping of the provincial Iraq leaders improve their infrastructure revitalization program. Dr. Traynor is a fellow of the American Society of Engineering Management, was named the Engineering Manager of the Year for 2011 by the society. He is past president of Epsilon Mu Ettaeta, the National Engineering Management Honor Society. Tim taught courses in engineering and management, systems engineering, and decision analysis. Tim is, Dr. Traynor, Tim is married to Colonel, retired Donna Brazel, Dr. Donna Brazel, who led the psychology department program at the West Point until 2013, and now provides educational services and leadership development. They have a daughter, Cory, who is currently a lieutenant stationed in Missouri. I understand their, and a son, Dan, is currently a lieutenant in the United States Army Flight School. Both of them are in Puerto Rico, assisting in that. They both went to the academy. And Zach, who was at the graduation, is a junior class cadet, is a junior class cadet at West Point. It's a wonderful family, we're so excited to have them here, and I bring a lot of wonderful attributes to our community. I think we're going to be very well-served. You, you as a Mount graduate, so I hope, if you had a chance to meet Doc?
Not yet.
Oh, you'll get there, we'll get you there. Okay. If I may, Dr. Traynor. Thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that was longer than my, my statement here. I just wanted to, thank you though, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want, and I appreciate you all giving me an opportunity to, to talk to you. I, I just wanted to take a few moments now that I'm, quote, "the official 26th president of Mount St. Mary's," to say a few words before the council. First of all, I want to thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. A lot of good things going on in the Mount right now, a lot of good things. Been here for a year as an interim role, and just now, like I said, as the official role. We've increased our enrollment. Freshmen enrollment's up by over 100 freshmen this year, grew by 24%. Our seminary enrollment grew by 30, from 115 to 145. Our students are doing exceptionally well. Lot of national recognition, international recognition. Last year, we have five students earn full, some form of Fulbright grant from the Fulbright Foundation. We just had our very first student, who was named a semifinalist for the Marshall Scholarship, which is a very prestigious international scholarship. He goes for his finalist interview at the British Embassy in DC on November 13th, so if you keep him in his thoughts, and think positive thoughts on November 13th about him there. Athletics, of course, are doing very well. You know about basketball, and I want to thank the town for the impromptu parade last year welcoming back our basketball team from the NCAA's tournament from Buffalo in March. Men's rugby won the national tournament for the sevens in their collegiate division there, and, and our men's basketball team is off to a 2-0 start so this year, although they run into Marquette on Friday and Notre Dame on Monday, so it'll be interesting. But, a lot of good things going on at the Mount right now, and I want to thank you for the town's support of the Mount. Just a couple of examples I'd like to highlight, a big thanks go out to the Vigilant Fire Company and to the Emmitsburg ambulance, folks who do respond to situations on the Mount, so we appreciate their support in that. Of course, I want to thank the sheriff's deputies who respond periodically to events, issues at the Mount. Some students I know are involved, are in housing downtown here, and, Mr. President, I want to thank you for your support in doing the bike and hiking trails around the Mount. That helps our students and helps with recruiting of others. Want to congratulate the town on your sidewalk repairs going on, and sidewalk, sidewalk project, and I really look forward to the new town square going in, and that, and the town clock going there, in there. I want to just talk about a few initiatives we have ongoing that, that I could see have, have a, some collaboration with the town. First of all, we're going to continue to grow. I think our enrollments will continue to grow, not at a 24% rate, but they will grow, I think, and so we'll be bringing more young people here to experience the goodness of the Mount, and the experience the goodness of Emmitsburg and this surrounding area. So that, there'll be some, we'll be talking to you about how can we potentially work together on housing, whether there's housing options to work on, so I see some area of work there. We have an ongoing partnership with the Daughters of Charity, we call it the Seton Dubois Initiative. What that is really about is further, carrying on the legacies of Father John Dubois and St. Elizabeth Anne Seton, and we're forming this partnership where it's primarily focused on service. Our students love to do volunteer service, 75% of them do some form of voluntary service while they're at the Mount, and this is a way to, to provide additional opportunities for service, and so I see some continued work on that. As we've grown, we've grown our NCAA Division One sports teams, as we've grown the Mount. What that has done, as we've gone from 290 student athletes two years ago, 330 last year, 425 at the start of this year, and I project us to go to 525 when we complete our growth plan with respect to athletics. What that's doing is putting a strain on the healthcare that we provide to the student athletes, and so we're in the process of, we are currently doing a request for proposals for partners, healthcare partners, to come in to the Mount to provide greater availability and quality and accessibility of healthcare for not just our student athletes, but the entire student body. As we do that, we are, these partners are interested in potentially putting an urgent care type facility in a surrounding community that would support not just the Mount, but could support the surrounding communities, and so I envision having a discussion with you at that point to enhance the care, level of care in this area also. And we still, I have not given up on the idea of getting a, a path or trail to connect Emmitsburg better, whether it's a sidewalk along Old Emmitsburg Road, or it is a trail through the woods somehow. I know the county, I spoke to Kathy Abzale on Saturday at a Veterans Day Parade in Brunswick. I was fortunate enough to be the master of ceremonies there, and she is working that project. We have not given up on it, we'd love to be able to try and do that, but, both for to better connect the towns, but also for safety concerns. And then finally, the last thing I wanted to leave you with is, I'm going to, I have a new chief of staff, Wayne Green, who's met with Mayor Briggs, and I'm going to put him on the task of, of starting a discussion with the town about potentially doing a, potentially having an idea of doing a periodic joint council between the Mount and the town to discuss issues related to, that are in the best interests of both parties, and so we'll be looking at that in the future. So, ladies and gentlemen, that's all I wanted to offer tonight. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to come say hello to you formally, now that I'm officially the 26th president, and I'd be happy to, if there's time, Mr. President, take any questions or comments.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Ritz, can I introduce Dr. Traynor? Dr. Traynor, Mr. Ritz?
How you doing? Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
An alumnus? No, just excited that you're president of Mount St. Mary's. I'm an alum, history and business, and just looking forward to your successful tenure.
Thank you, thank you.
I do have one question.
Sure.
I'm sorry about coming late, I have another meeting ahead of this one.
Mr. Sweeney, that's from myself, that, that's not from the...
No, I was just looking, I had a question. He said about a new healthcare coming for urgent care, coming in, would that interfere with our two doctors we already have in here in our practices?
Oh, yeah, we do have to.
Well, that, that, there's been no talks with the current doctors here or that, and we're still in the process of getting RFPs, Request for Proposals, in from these, and there's a, both partners have expressed an interest in being able to service a broader community than just the Mount, because that helps with the economics of the proposal. So, once we get the RFPs in, then we'll go into a discussion with any doctors that this may potentially impact, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Blanchard?
As, as a veteran, just wanted to make sure I invite you this Saturday on November 11th, of course, with the anniversary Veterans Day, the local American Legion and VFW honor guard will be going around the town firing a salute based at different cemeteries. They will start 11 o'clock, if I understand it right, they will start at the cemetery behind St. Joseph's Church, at the grave of Francis Xavier Elder, which is the namesake of our local legion posts. They'll start 11 o'clock there, from there, they usually go down to the statue of the doughboy for Rule 1, and then from there to the different cemeteries. But, just want to extend an open invitation, if you happen to be around at 11 o'clock this Saturday.
Appreciate it.
I know you got a chance to go down to Brunswick, so we'd appreciate your presence here at 11 o'clock on, on Saturday too, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I have, we have an event at the Mount at 10, but I think I, hopefully I can get over and at least catch a part of that, but, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Buckman?
Yeah, well, thank you very much for your service to our country, that's, that's wonderful, thank you. And also, we love here in Emmitsburg, I lead up the Citizens Advisory Committee, and your students are a very vital part of our town, and we love them. And just on, what was it, October 28th, a whole bunch of Mount students came out and did community outreach to a lot of our elderly and disabled in the town, and so we appreciate that, and that's it, that's it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, thank you for coming in, we appreciate it. I would love the opportunity to meet with you at some point where we could just have a cordial conversation and talk about shared visions perhaps for our communities. And the other piece is, I don't envy you, you have a tremendous challenge ahead of you, but it seems you're doing it capably. We, we are grateful that you are here, beyond just for our town, but for the viability of the university. It is a special place, we are a special community collectively, and we want to enhance your mission and achieving your mission, and we also want to improve our community. So, together, hopefully we can work on these things, and thank you, appreciate you being here.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming up.
Stay or go, whatever, what, thank you.
Okay, so, we'll turn to our meeting items, okay? So, I'll now turn to...
Trying to turn this off, excuse me.
Oh, okay, fair enough, yeah, I may have been short on the phones, my apologies. Okay. Approved meeting minutes of the October 2nd meeting for 2017, does anybody have any changes or enhancements they want to see related to those minutes? No? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I make a motion to accept the October 2nd meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you, sir. The motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. Next item. Deputy, good evening, we turn to you for the police report.
Excuse me, you have minutes from the October 16th public hearing as well that need to be approved.
Okay, let's turn to that, all right.
Right behind the October 2nd. I apologize, they weren't listed on page one.
No problem. Okay, so, being flexible, we now turn to the hearing minutes for the October 16th hearing, and that was related to the water line discussion. Are there any changes, enhancements, anybody wants to see related to that?
The, the only question I had was regarding the discussion topics, there, there's a line item in there that the board discussed logistics, concerns, and endorsement of the NLC Service Line Warranty Program. Did we want to be, I, I know the, the nature of minutes, do we want to be that vague, or do we need more specifics?
Well, are you interested in seeing more specifics related to the requests that came forward for the potential vendor and for the town attorney? Are you hoping to see more related to that?
Yeah, I know, a few of us had some concerns, and then there, there was some, there were the, the other, the other side of the coin too.
The argument in favor?
Raising the program, yeah, so.
Sure, okay.
That's all I have to offer.
Okay, so, do you want to see those changes made?
Sure, yes.
Okay, all right, does anyone want to hear it? Okay.
We actually reached out to MML because we don't have public hearings very often, and, and got this template from them for public hearing minutes, and this is what they, they recommended, because they can be so lengthy.
Okay.
And, you know, the minutes are about what was done, not what was said.
Sure.
So, we, based off their recommendation, this is why they were done this way.
So procedural versus a specific detail of...
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Ritz, are you comfortable with that, or do you want to see a modification?
I'll turn it to you.
Aren't you kind? Okay, well, there we go. Does anybody else want to see any variations or changes there related to positions?
Right, right.
Okay. The only concern that I would have is that we did make some specific requests that we do want to see followed up on, if they haven't been already, and that would be it. So, do we anticipate hearing these responses tonight, like during the manager's presentation, or in December, or do you know?
If you would like it brought back to the agenda in December, that's when I would have everything ready.
Okay, so turning to Mr. Ritz.
That's...
Would that satisfy your concern?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, I guess the burden now falls to us to make sure these items come forward and do vigilance.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, regarding that discussion, is there a motion to accept the hearing minutes from October 16th related to the water line?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the October 16th water line meeting.
Great, thank you. The motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman, is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving forward, we now turn to the police report. Deputy, thank you for your flexibility.
Sure, absolutely. I'm Deputy Whitehouse with the Freddie County Sheriff's Office. This is the police report for October 2017. As you can see, it's a new form, I haven't had a chance to really go through it a whole lot, the numbers were plugged in, it's just a, a new form that my sergeant came up with, and it's kind of uniform through all the three towns that we have, so. The number on the left is going to be, as you can probably imagine, it's going to be the current number for the month, and then the number to the right of that's going to be for the yearly total, for all those down. And under the traffic stats even too, I mean, you can see, I had to handwrite some of those in, we're still working with a couple boxes, they, they wouldn't hold three, you know, three-digit numbers, so I had to handwrite those in, so. That said, going through, going through this, trying to look at this myself, we had a burglary, looks like we had one assault, six alarms, six 911 calls, four, four disorderlies. The proactive, the proactive enforcement, we, 18 walks, 48 patrol checks. The traffic stats, we had 116 traffic stops this, in October, you can see the citations and warnings written out there of what we did. The arrests and violations, we had three traffic arrests, two criminal arrests. Calls for service under the special, in the special assignments down there, that case was, you could see damage to town property, and through video surveillance, was able to track those down, who did that, it was a damaged stop sign in a poll. As I said, through video, was able to track them down and speak with them, they were charged with the destruction, and they came in, I believe, three or four days ago, and actually paid for the damage ahead of court. The special assignments we had, down at the bottom, Deputy Mostall read to the first graders at Emmitsburg Elementary, we had the Halloween parade and the trick-or-treat, I had tended the, assisted with the red helmet ride during the fallen firefighters' weekend, and the Vigilant Hoes Open House. Due to the concern of the crashes at Seton and Lincoln Avenue, spent a lot of time, and the bulk of those, a lot of those warnings are from the actual, the new sign with the no right, or the, the updated sign of the no right on, or no right, right only, I'm sorry, right only between 3 and 7, at that, at both sides of the Lincoln Avenue, so, spent a lot of time there, just educating people on the crashes, and it's a right turn only, so.
So, have the signs made a difference, in your opinion?
I, I think so. Sometimes, I mean, it's hard to tell, but I do believe so. Sometimes I'll stand out there and just point at it, you know, certain times I'll just, and they're like...
It's a photo op.
You should put lights around it.
Yeah, it's the flashy lights, yes. And on a side note, also, this, this was this month, I believe, but we had another theft from unlocked vehicle, so I hate to keep going over that again, but...
We need to hear it.
Please lock your vehicle doors, take anything inside that's valuable, or hide it, at least in your car, but just lock, lock the, lock the vehicle doors, it's not that difficult, so. Is there any, any questions or concerns, or anything on the form, if any you haven't really gone over or looked at it much yet, but, if there's anything that you want captured that's not on there, just email, or let me know, and we can try to get it on there?
Just a quick question related to crash statistics. Is there a GIS related to events at intersections? Someone had asked me about that, they're, they have a concern related to, I'm losing my name, the street by the laundromat, they had a concern there about vehicle crashes, so...
Jamison?
Jamison. Okay, yes.
So you just want, you looking for specific stats there, is that what you're...
Just, that might be useful, because what's going to come forward in, in time is, they're interested in having the town consider removing a parking space there, in, in an effort to have it be a safer intersection.
Okay.
Now, their specific concern was, they got T-boned there, because there was a tall vehicle blocking their view, and it was their, their position that, had there been no parking in that spot, and the tall vehicle had been one space back, they likely would not have had that accident occur. Now, that's a...
More visibility is always good, but...
Yeah, yeah. So, if something is available, if, if it's available, we'd love to, you know, see that for consideration.
Okay, yeah, definitely.
Okay, great, okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions for the deputy? And these were all people from out of town and no students, correct?
What's that?
No, 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 no. Okay, very good, all right, thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Okay, moving forward, we now turn to the town manager's report.
Good evening, this is town manager's report for September. I'll just highlight some of the areas. Related to the streets, staff put up fallen firefighter banners on the streetlight poles, they installed no parking signs and painted the white lines on Warthens Way, we repaired some streetlights on East and West Main Street, not related to the sidewalk project, and added a children at play sign by the entrance to Carrot Court. Related to the sidewalk and bridge project, staff straightened and replaced curb boxes on East and West Main Street, staff put up two new streetlight poles and fixtures on West Main Street, and staff were, with the contractor repaired damaged streetlights, conduit and wiring damaged by sidewalk contractor. We've had three incidents just this previous month where conduit and streetlights have been damaged, so staff's, it's taking up a lot of staff time to help get the lights back up and running and get the contractor out there. Related to the parks, staff mowed, trimmed, weed killed in the parks, and the contractor conducted inspections and tested all of our emergency warning signs and found everything to be in good working order. Related to water, Rainbow Lake, as of September, was .4 inches below the spillway level, the normal is 16.6, as of today, we're only .1 inch below the spillway. Our wells, as of September, were an average of 11.75 feet below their May 2011 levels, and however, we did turn on well number four, because we were having some drop in, I believe it was well number three, but everything is stabilized, and we're only, like I said, only 11.75 feet below, which is good for this time of year. For the wastewater, we received 2.05 inches of precipitation in the month of September. We currently have a surplus of 3.45 inches over the last six months. However, I will note, at last meeting in August, we had a surplus of 4.79 inches, so it did drop a little bit. Related to the wastewater treatment plant, we treated an average of 427,000 gallons per day and consumed roughly 250,000, which means that 41.4% of the wastewater treated this month was wild water. So again, to reiterate that we need to start focusing on our, our, our infrastructure, which we'll probably be bringing some proposals to you at the first part of next year. We had no spills of untreated sewage in the month of September, and we did not exceed the plant's design capacity at any time in September. I will mention two things, as we're prepping for next year's calendar, 2018, I wanted to just give everybody the heads up, with the way the New Year's holiday falls, your town meeting in January will be, as long as you approve it, would be January 8th, because the town office is closed the first and second, so I just wanted to give everybody the heads up on that. And I received an email related to our LG Sonic, and apparently the state is looking at monitoring the toxins in drinking water as far as our lake is concerned, and one thing to keep in mind is that we're well ahead of that curve already, because with the LG Sonic system, we're controlling the blue-green algae, which is what releases your toxins. So, we are going in the right direction, we've had some positive results with the LG Sonic, they're continuing to monitor it, we're continuing to work with them so that they continue to, to adjust as needed. And that is all I have.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for the town manager? Yes, sir, Mr. Blanchard?
First of all, thanks for, town staff, give me a handle, my reimbursement check for my garden plots, and I, I think I went by it yesterday, and I noticed that it looks like other people have already pulled their wires out for the maniframes. Is there a way to get town staff just to weed whack that area and just kind of get it down?
Around, around the garden plots?
Yeah, around the garden plots, it's, you know, we, we got the, the turkey truck coming up here on Thanksgiving, on Thanksgiving Day, just be kind of nice if people actually walk past it, you know, it's kind of, I mean, myself and a couple others pulled their weeds, but there's a couple that are like, kind of, kind of scruffy looking, so...
Sure.
They can just weed whack it or something like that, appreciate it.
Yep.
Thanks.
Great, okay. Any other questions for the town manager?
Related to the backwash, the backwash now is related to, like, rainfall kicking up turbidity or something, as opposed to algae, or...
Where am I looking? Underwater?
Correct, underwater...
Just backwash.
Difference is backwash, 19.3%.
Yeah, well, we had, you know, when you have, we had some significant amount of rain in, in September, and that does create, it turns up the water, and sometimes if, if the LG Sonic isn't making the, they're making the adjustments...
Right.
But if we get up there and we notice something, and we say, hey, make the adjustments, we still have to treat, to process that through, so we are still having backwash, but our backwash is a little bit lower than what it has been in previous months.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, any other questions for the town manager, related to the report? Okay, terrific. All right, moving forward, we now town, turn to the town planners' report, Ms. Superley.
Okay, as you...
Okay, as you all have noticed, we're doing a sidewalk project in town, that's.
How about that?
Ongoing, and the bridge project is also ongoing. As far as the sidewalk project goes, they're going to be doing the west end, people have wondered whether we're going to connect to Timber Mill or not, and that's going to be happening soon. They were just doing all this sort of normal sidewalk stuff first. Community legacy, we've submitted some more applications for, for work on buildings on Main Street, and Sustainable Communities Program is the umbrella program under which the community legacy and some other programs are, and we had to do our five-year renewal for that, so I've been going back and forth, they wanted some more, you submit one thing and then they wanted more detail and that sort of thing, so that's all been submitted. The dog park, the fence will be going up tomorrow, they had scheduled it for today, but it was raining too much, it was too wet, so. Emmett Gardens Play Area, that's all been submitted for the floodplain permit, and we're still waiting for a response on that. Emmett Gardens, the dead pine tree, I have not been out there to see whether it's still there or not, but I did contact Potomac Edison about that, and, which is not an easy thing to do, you go through the robot first and then.
Right.
You finally get to where you, and then you get a no-response email back saying, we've got it, but then I haven't heard anything, so.
So is that your electronic system note here, what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense now, all right.
Uh, oh, electronic system, yes. It's kinda like when your computer's not working and you have to call. Attended the EBPA Town Business Breakfast, which was well-attended. And, let's see, things that are on the to-do list, GIS, we have our consultants are coming out on Wednesday and Thursday, there will be somebody out there with a little GPS thing doing some data collection as to where our water elements are, like the water, like, all the meter boxes and things like that, and so probably they'll be in the Bunker Hill area, north of Main Street, the Paul Street area, so if you see somebody walking around with a little handheld GPS thing, that's who it is, and we'll put something on Channel ninety-nine in the website about that. I'm talking about the storm sewer thing later. Planning Commission, we had a discussion of, it's kind of a new issue, is this sort of random and transient rentals stemming from advertising online. People are renting out rooms in their home and on a, sometimes pretty, um, random basis, I guess, and it can have impacts on the neighborhood, and so we had a discussion at the Planning Commission at the meeting last week, just got some, I got some input back from, from the members, and we'll be working on that as we go along, and I think that's about it for now.
Okay, any questions for the town planner, related to the report?
Regarding the, the Planning Commission meeting with, with the, the online B and B, I, I was approached by someone in town that has such a business entity, so I'd, I'd like to meet with you potentially this week, just to go recap what you discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, so I can give her a follow-up.
I've been talking to her, you can come, you wanna come in and talk to me? I have everything, too.
Oh, you, okay.
Yeah, I, I know, I know exactly who you're talking about.
Okay.
And we have been working with her.
Okay.
And, sure, I'd be more than happy to talk to you and explain everything to you and, and everything that we're working on.
Perfect.
Just on the sort of generic level, there's commercial entities like motels, hotels and B and Bs that are actually a business, and then there's this other part of things that somehow we need to get a grip on, but we're not alone, it's, it's a widespread issue, so, talk to Kathy.
Okay. I just want to ensure that there's no permit issue, you know, if she's doing something.
Well, there, there, there potentially could be, so, yeah, I'm, I'm here all week, except for Friday.
All right, great.
It's a holiday.
Just throwing it in the mix, the.
Run it out there.
The MML, there was an MML presentation about this, this past summer, and, you know, let's, let's not stifle the digital economy too much, but, you know, understanding it, I agree, you know, we need to understand it, so, I'll, I'll leave that open-ended. Moving forward, any other questions for the town planner, related to the report? One item, and this sort of relates to the Parks and Rec Committee and the Emmett Garden Playground application. The Civitan organization is coming in to speak to the Parks and Recreation Committee, and there's, I would imagine, based on informal conversations, distinct possibilities that they want to provide funding for some equipment that would be sort of a universal, like for special needs youngsters and, you know, accessibility, beyond ADA compliant. Is it too late?
For that project?
For, the, the, we have no recourse for an addendum with the MDE, like to modify it, or, I know they're hard to get hold of.
I don't know that you wanna go, I mean, they take, what was their, gave us, how many days for them to even respond? They had like a hundred and eighty days to review this application, if we submitted addendum, you're gonna go backwards on that, and we have, you know, you're talking only disturbing a certain amount of area, and we've submitted those plans already, and I think, I mean, I think that's a great, a great opportunity that may be better suited in one of the other parks.
Exactly, I mean.
Is that gonna be, that's what I wanna?
That's, I was going to have them present, they, they were looking at the new location, but due to the, the hurdles we have to go through, and the small space, I was thinking maybe even community, community park, maybe Memorial Park, but definitely community park would be a more likely.
Great.
Space for that.
I just don't wanna lose that opportunity, I mean, someone's coming in here with money and a great vision.
Yeah.
You know, let's see it happen. Okay, we move on? Okay, let's press forward to commissioner comments. Commissioner Buckman.
Okay, um, a couple of elderly, unsteady-on-their-feet people have noticed that the sidewalk construction has left some pockets of street missing, making it a little bit dangerous for them. I've obviously told them to be very, very careful, but you guys are aware that that's happening?
I, I know, there's, there's definitely areas in town that they have to go back and shore up for different reasons, different areas had different concerns, and they're slowly working through that, now that they've got the main connections done, they're going back and fixing different areas up on West, East and West Main Street that do have issues. If somebody has a specific, a specific area that they're concerned about, you know, please email us and we will pass it on.
Yeah, she made me take pictures of it, so I.
We'll, we'll pass them on to State Highway, we have another meeting on Thursday.
Okay, okay, and then also, someone in passing, I'm not, I, I'm not familiar with this gentleman, who uses our recycling area, he doesn't have online access or Channel ninety-nine access, and he finds when he goes there, there's not really a sign saying it's open or closed, and so he goes in, and then he gets yelled at, and he doesn't, if there could be a sign saying open, then he wouldn't have to drive in.
Well, if there's a town truck, usually there's a town staff member's right there, and, and the gates tech probably closed if it's not open.
It's always been open, he said, yeah.
Okay, but if it's open, there's town staff truck there, we can look at an, an open sign. It's always the first and third Saturday, very rarely is that switched, the only time it switches is if there's a holiday, like for example, next year, the only time it switched is with Labor Day, because it falls on Labor Day weekend, but, I mean, I can, we can look into it.
Maybe we could post hours there and.
It is, it is.
It is, great, okay.
It is.
Internally lit sign or externally lit sign? No, no, okay, all right, okay, great.
Anyhow, he asked, I said I'd bring it up.
Okay.
And then also, guys, the turkey trot on Thanksgiving morning, everything's going to the Seton Center to help the North Frederick County community, so please come and join us.
Great, okay.
Yes, I'm just writing down notes to order the porta-pots.
Great, that's important. Okay, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Great, okay. Commissioner Ritz?
I actually have nothing this evening.
Great, okay. Commissioner Sweeney?
I would like to thank the town and town staff and all the police and all the volunteers and everyone who helped with Halloween, it really was well-attended, it was our best year I think we've had for a long time. The parade, we had three hundred and thirty or forty-some people in the parade, children and adults, and then, and we had a nice party at the fire hall, and, and without the whole community to come together, we couldn't have did it, you know, everybody worked together as a team, so, including the town, so I appreciate the town staff and everybody for all their help, and the mayor and everybody, thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Mr. Blanchard?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, a couple things, food bank items, if everyone's looking at the doors, they should've gotten a little bag tied to it from the Boy Scouts, the troop in town, this is their food collection week, they'll be coming around Saturday picking those bags back up and dropping off at the food bank. This is probably one of the largest food drives we have in town, so I do ask residents to try to help out the Boy Scouts with putting items in those. Now, please be careful when you put items in the bags, check out the expiration date. We have a lot of problems with people donating food that's already expired, that's not something we can give out to people, so please be careful when you put something in a bag, make sure it hasn't expired already. Other items in the food bank, I did notice when I worked this Saturday morning, they are quite short on items such as coffee, tea, juice, things that people don't think of a lot of times at the food bank, but those are items that we do give away to people that are qualified in the local area, so if you have those items, please donate to the Boy Scouts this weekend when they come around and collect it. I have to be walking out of the food bank Saturday morning, and I came in contact with the S H A inspector, actually the bridge, Saturday morning, so I got a chance to talk to him a little bit about the project, he did say that the project is on schedule, he said that basically the idea is to continue to work through the winter and get it done, and he took some time with me, just kinda showed me the structure of the old bridge a little bit, and so it was kinda one of those serendipitous moments where I was just, well, give me the right spot at the right time, and he took some time to talk to me once I told him I was the commissioner, he was, oh, hey, you know, come on over with me, so, kinda just kinda neat. The other thing is this, this Saturday being Veterans Day, the eleventh, and at eleven o'clock, weapons will be fired, I know last year there was a problem with a resident at the Emmett Apartments, who was quite startled when the rifles were fired in the morning, and this was an individual, if I understand correctly, from Spock, that he was suffering from PTSD, which is a very real problem, and based on the incidents of the last thirty-five days between Las Vegas and what happened in Texas over the weekend, I think it's very pursuit of the town, if we could put something on both our town website and on the town cable channel, letting people know this is gonna happen, so when they hear rifles fired at eleven o'clock in the morning, you know, they, you know, please stay calm, this is actually part of a Veterans Day memorial and not something else is happening, and I get it, you know, people hear this noise like this after all the events, I can see where it can be very startling, so, I think it would be much in our, our way to let people know this is gonna happen, so they're not calling the police, nine-one-one and everything else.
So you, they shoot, um.
These blanks.
The Doughboy, right.
Yeah.
At the Doughboy and where else?
Well, they start off at the cemetery behind St. Joseph's Church, at the grave of Francis Xavier Elder, who's the namesake of Legion Post, so they start there.
In Elias.
In Elias Church, and then they go to the Doughboy statue, and then everything else is outside of town at the old cemeteries.
Okay.
So it, it does affect a number of people that have been living apartments and houses around this area, you Cliff?
Could, could we get a, just a flyer made up and maybe stick in the, on the doorway of the, at the Doughboy for that man?
That would be nice.
So he knows.
Yes.
For Veterans Day?
Yes.
Okay, but I just thought about the other day, I thought, people could get very startled on Saturday when this is going on.
He was very, yes, we will, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Great, okay, thank you, yeah, very, very timely that we have a context for that.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, town staff, there was a question that came forward via email related to a tree well, it sounds like that's been addressed, uh, some homeowners didn't want a tree, and there's a tree well in front of their property that squared away, that's the, the discussion's been had, or?
Well, yeah, it was referred to State Highway, and ultimately, it's a State Highway project, and they're gonna dictate where the trees can go, where they're gonna go, so for every tree that was removed, a tree has to be replaced, and their landscape design team are the ones that determine where the trees could go. If we got a recommendate or request, we certainly pass that on to State Highway, but unfortunately, they have the final say of where these trees are gonna go in. All we can do is be advocates and.
Okay.
Do the best that we can.
Great, okay.
I didn't recall anyone saying that we were putting them right back where they were.
No, they, they never said that.
Right, no, that was, yeah.
There was never a statement that if you, if you had one, you're getting one back, or if you didn't have one, you wouldn't get one, I think it was all logistics and how they lined up, I mean, you can't put three in one group and then go half a block and then put another one in, so.
Trying to make it aesthetic.
Right, it has to be lined up and look pleasing.
Related to the, the State Highway interaction with town, we had a complaint related to the striping at the bridge during wet weather, at night, it's very difficult to determine what the safe route is because you get reflections from existing stripes, and the stripes have been ground out, so if, if they can either add lighting or review what they have in place, because I, I heard that from more than a few folks, that that was something that was worrisome to them, I mean, they, they, one person nearly had an accident, another person was worried about accidents and so on, so, if, if that could go forward, please. Let's see, we had one email related to, or I received it, I believe the commissioners received it, endorsing the idea, pending a review with our attorney, related to the waterline item, that individual's here this evening, so we'll, we'll go from there in the, the public comment, but I wanted to acknowledge that did occur. Moving from there, my compliments to the Boy Scouts who are painting the fire hydrants around town, they're doing it in phase, Mr. President, the, one of the leaders of the Scouts is Professor Anadell, and his son's involved, and he is a town resident, he's volunteered for a lot of different things, my hats off to him, he's also working with Mr. Lowe, who was from, what's that town, Thurmond, yeah, he's from Thurmond, okay, no, nevertheless, the Scouts are killing it and they're doing a great service to the town. I had met with a NICA representative, that is the high school cycling group, their representative is very enthusiastic about what we offer with our trails up on the mountain, their national group sent this person to kinda do the preliminary review, so, the, the scout came forward, now we're waiting for the body of the troops to come in, they will be visiting here on the fifteenth, and at that time, we're gonna go survey the trails, it is during hunting season, so we will do it at midday, I've spoken to a number of hunters, and they said midday is our best interest, we will have orange with us, fear not, but what they wanna do is in time, bring their competitions to Emmitsburg, and they're also talking beyond that, they wanna have a conference here, and they wanna do a summer program here, so I think we're moving in a good direction. To tell you about this organization ever so briefly, in Pennsylvania, they started with three hundred students in 2015, last year they had six hundred students involved in the program. If you go to Colorado, a different sort of culture regarding, you know, outdoor activity to a point, in Colorado, I believe the number was six thousand kids are involved in this program. In California, they had to break up between Northern California and Southern California, so many kids were involved out there, so, it's a really healthy activity, it brings young people here, but also, it's something our own youngsters can get involved in, so my hope is that, if, if I bring more information forward, it's well-received, and we find out they're doing things appropriately so we can be involved. So that's the NICA, and again, I'll share with you outcomes at our next meeting, 'cause they're coming on the fifteenth. Beyond that, the trail promotional videos are live and out there, you can go to Facebook and see those at Emmitsburg Trails, they promote the town, they encourage visits, they encourage people to go use the trails and to volunteer here, so those are pretty, pretty useful. And though the HQ two window has closed for us to get Amazon here, I'm still hopeful that maybe, maybe Marilyn will get them, and beyond that, I'll see everybody, I hope, at the turkey trot, you know, if you're there loud, I'll be a sweeper again, so if you wanna ride, if you're inclined, come on down.
Okay.
Okay, it's a five-mile loop, not too hard. Okay, and with that, I'll conclude my comments, and I'll turn to himself, Mr. Mary, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
And then after that, just for the record, then we'll go to public comments, and then we'll go to agenda items related to the Cadoctinets, so, Cadoctinaires, I hope I got that right.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Mary?
All right, thank you, I also got a email and a call on their tree location downtown, and I reckon there is a very wonderful, dedicated person in our community, and we're gonna work with that. October eighth, I, I gave the welcoming speech at the National Fallen Fire Fighters Memorial Service, the following Monday, I attended the National Fire Heritage Center Board Meeting in the morning, and the Job Fair, Seton Center Job Fair, very successful event in the afternoon, and on the ninth, I had an interview with W. And on the night, I had an interview with W., wait, DVM, Commercial TV, Channel 25, Hagerstown, and met with Roger Wilson, the aide to Jan Gardner on transportation, trying to secure another bus run up here at midday, see if we could do that. Went to the MML Fall Conference in Rockville, Maryland on the 12th. On the 16th, I submitted my article for the Catoctin banner. And on the 20th, College of Liberal Arts Advisory Committee at the Mount, part of that, and it was a wonderful meeting on October 22nd. Frederick County Fire and Rescue Museum dedication of the Wall of Honor, that was on Sunday, gave a welcoming there. Frederick News Park, I've, I've got these for you all, if you want to look at them. We're, we're kind of coming into this with, at Main, with Main Street of Thurmont, but it's going to grow. But I submitted our welcoming into there, and also it featured at this time around the Mount, the Grotto and Fire Companies. We're also going to get the Fallen Firefighters and the Basilica in the next, next one. Come out three times, and we're going to do another one in January. We're trying to pick up ads, and it's, it's a wonderful resource. It's Thurmont and Emmitsburg working together to, for a very interesting, keep it, the, working together for Northern Frederick County and doing everything we can for our people. I met with Joe Leopards and Wayne Green on the 25th. Before that, October 23rd, I got to give a welcome to President Traynor's inauguration, terrific event there. Went to the Frederick County Chapter Meeting, MML Maryland Municipal League meeting on the 26th for dinner. Then on the 28th, ESP Company Productions 5K Run, it's, I think you might be familiar with that. It was run out to Thurmont, I mean, excuse me, at the Mount, and I was, I started that. And then November 1st, I was over at DM, DVM Commercial TV Channel for a presentation on Emmitsburg. You were there the day before, Mr.? And then, let's see, anything else? December 6th, Maryland Municipal League. We have to know who's going to go to that pretty soon, any of the delegates. That means, please contact the office here, but it's, your guest is on you, you're free. We're, not free, but we're taking care of that. The only thing, the fire hydrants, we, that program, wonderful thing by the Boy Scouts. We had two Boy Scouts in here for merit work, and I put them up here, and I stood up there, and they asked me questions, and it was a wonderful, wonderful event. And then, the one thing I didn't hear, maybe I missed it, but they're, they're pouring concrete this week on, at the pool?
Yes, yes. They will be pouring concrete, the concrete shell, Tuesday and Wednesday, while they're permitting. And they've requested, and we posted that there's no parking in the pool lot those two days for all their equipment, yes.
Right, right. This will, November 11th, Veterans Day, this will be the first one I'll have to miss. I went to a wedding out in Colorado in seven years, but it's a terrific event, very, very solid, very, very wonderful, wonderful thing. All of you, I'm glad you got it. Okay, all right, thank you very much, that's it.
Mr. Mayor, one question. An award, I understood, was bestowed upon you. We should congratulate you for your Theodore Roosevelt Conservation Award?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Well done. What do we need to know? It will be a...
Well, I didn't get any help from staff, that's...
I don't believe you, sir, I don't believe you.
It was a solo. No, no, it's, it's, to me, it's like a 35-year overnight success, but this group we have here, they really, really were spectacular. They did so many wonderful things pulling this together, and it's, I'm really honored. It's the first time there, this group is offering the Theodore Roosevelt, Teddy Roosevelt Award for Conservation, and I'm honored, but it's really because of the town, you all and everybody. So, that's it, thank you very much.
Congratulations, sir. Okay, at this time, we now turn to public comments. Signed up, I have Mr. Eric Sloan. I have Mr. Rick Young. I don't have a subject for you, Mr. Young. And I have Ms. Walbrecker, and I don't have a subject for yourself either. And for Ms. Miller, you will have an agenda related, you are an agenda item speaker, so just so you know. Okay. No, 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 you're, you're fine doing it here. Okay, so at this time, I invite Mr. Sloan forward, if he is still interested in speaking. And sir, what I'll ask you to do is if you identify yourself and your street address, and the deus is yours for four minutes?
Eric Sloan, I'm at 500 East Main Street. Basically, what I could address is, we still have a, a traffic problem with the speed of people that are coming down Main Street towards the flat-run bridge construction now. I went out yesterday morning with my coffee and watched a propane truck go by at about 60 miles an hour. All I could figure was it was hit, if it hit anything down that bridge, we'd have a really pretty scene to look at. And as far as, you mentioned lights down there, it is extremely dark, and one of the things that might want to try and get with the state before the bridge is finished is the installation of lights on both sides of it for pedestrian safety. Because once you get down past the pregnancy center, the last light on my side of the street, it's dark until you get the other side of the bridge.
And that's the pedestrian bridge also?
Yep.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it? Great, sir, thank you for coming in, appreciate it. Okay, we now turn to Mr. Rick Young. And again, if you'd introduce yourself and give us your address, and the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. My name is Rick Young. Live at Three Adams Avenue, Emmitsburg, Maryland. I noticed that in the last newsletter, there was a, I noticed that something about the water line warranty thing, and I came in and paid the bill this morning, and the nice lady at the desk said, "Well, if you're interested, come to town meeting, and you should get some information about it." So, that's mainly why I'm here, just to see, you know, just what's involved. I didn't know if anybody up here can give me information, or, or what?
The, the water line program, we haven't adopted. We are still in sort of a decision-making process. The idea is that a private company wants the town to endorse their product, and the product itself is a form of insurance, it sounds like, where an individual would pay anywhere between $7 a month and, I think, $22 a month each month. And that would provide them protection for the water line as it runs from the edge of their building structure to where it hooks to the town line.
Okay.
So, if one needs to replace that water line, the, the program is supposed to replace that.
Right.
Or repair it. So, it doesn't necessarily mean that the entire length would be replaced. It might mean a section of it might be.
Okay. So, really, so what it means is that from the sidewalk into the house, the owner is responsible?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Also provide inside the house plumbing insurance, as well as...
Oh, really?
...the sewage going out.
Oh, really, okay.
Three different things that you can opt...
Okay.
To get.
Altogether, it runs up to $22, I think. It's separately, it's like seven, one, five for another, and something adds up to $22. If you get all three, you don't have to take them.
Oh, really, okay.
If we decide to do this program, which we haven't decided yet, you'll have an option to take it or not. You don't have to.
Okay, right. I'm interested, so that's why I came, so I don't know if I'm the lone wolf, but, you know, I'm interested, so...
We've heard from other folks who've expressed interest as well.
Okay, great, okay. All right, thanks for your time.
If you'd like to see, Ms. Shaw has a handout here for you to get more information on it.
That's right. Okay, thanks a lot.
Mr. Young, thank you for coming in. Very good, okay. We now turn to Ms. Walbrecker.
I have a couple of things. I had to reorder my list here.
Ask you to introduce yourself and the address.
Oh, yeah. Diane Walbrecker, I live at 535 West Main Street. Okay, first, I still have a flickering light outside on my Main Street. Anyway, as of last night, it, it hadn't been fixed yet. Second, trees on Main Street, I think it's a great idea to put them back where they came from, and I think, Don, you had said that was going to be done, so...
They're going to get as close as they can, but they have a time, they have an opportunity to make, or easy for pedestrians to get by. They may move around a little bit.
Right, and I, I understand that. I just hope that they're at some place on my property. I really appreciated the presentation by President Tim Traynor, and I look forward to having that renewed relationship between the town and gown, as, as has been so strong before in the past. I mean, there was a real sense of community. I don't know if you remember, Don, but when they helped us with the first comprehensive plan, they were right involved with every little bit of that, so look forward to that. Okay, what else? Oh, I was at a film that was put on by the Thurmont Green Team on Saturday, and I know that, that they're doing a lot of work, so I hope to become more involved with our green team and help out with that, and possibly even doing some tree planting like we used to do at the Emmitsburg Elementary School. Some of those trees are still there. As a matter of fact, I'm really happy to hear that. Possibly, it might be a good idea in our water bills to put like a myths and facts, like what, what do citizens have to pay for? What do, what does the town cover? I mean, stuff like, you know, people may forget that they have to cover, that they have to take the, the snow off of their property in front of their house. You know, just like a little reminder, "Hey, news flash, what do you need to know to be a citizen in Emmitsburg?" Something like that might be a good idea. And, let me see, and I saved this one for last. Brings tears to my eyes, actually. Don, I was talking to Ryan Miller, who is the emergency manager for Howard County. And the reason is because I'm working with their recovery team after the Eloquent City floods, and the only town that Eloquent City heard from after the Eloquent City floods was, he got an email from Don Briggs, from the town of Emmitsburg, wishing them well two days after the floods, and saying, God, I'm about to tear up again, "We stand behind you and let us know if we can do anything." And he said he heard from Emmitsburg, and he heard from a sister city in like Ukraine or something. And that was it, out of all the communities in the whole United States. So, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and say, "Well done, Mayor."
Thank you.
And he really, he spoke highly of that, so, thanks. I hope our recovery plan, do we have one yet?
I think we have them in place, yes.
It is, yeah, and we do.
We have one, we do, and we're currently updating it. It'll be brought to you in January.
Perfect. Anyway, if I can help in any way in that, I teach recovery planning across the United States, so I'd be happy to help. Yes.
May I?
Yes, sir, absolutely, Mr. Ray, please.
Maybe you want to get one of those packets you had emailed about that program?
I had emailed about the, yeah, about the water line program, and I got one of the packages, so thank you very much. You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you.
That's very kind of you, thank you. Okay. That's all we have signed up for public comment at this time? Okay, we now turn to an administrative business item, a proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to read it, or do you want me to?
You go ahead and read. I've already read some of them, I'm worn out.
That was a rhetorical question. All right, this proclamation, which we do every year, it's through MML, and it's a proclamation for Municipal Government Works Month, November 2017. And basically, it states, "The mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg proclaimed November to be Municipal Government Works Month, whereas the town was established in 1785, and whereas Maryland is home to 156 other municipalities, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsible, responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials, and whereas, in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Emmitsburg is proud to promote municipal government awareness, and whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintaining natural and historical sites, historic sites and structures, and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby join the Maryland Municipal League in declaring November 2017 to be Municipal Government Works Month in Emmitsburg."
Great. Thank you. Okay. All right, we turn to our next administrative business item.
You have to vote on it, please?
Do we vote?
Yes, you have to adopt it.
Okay, well, then we should, we should look for that, I am sorry, okay. Whoops. Moving forward. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation as presented.
Very good. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Blanchard, it's been seconded by Commissioner Buckman. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay, very good. Thank you...
Thank you.
...for the heads up. All right, we press on. Now, we go to the second administrative business item, the presentation related to Open Meetings, the Open Meetings Act, an update. Ms. Shaw?
Do you need this?
Yeah.
I got it, got it.
We're trading places. You can name the places.
Yeah, warm. Is that okay?
I don't think you can see it when you do the camera. You have to at least that much, I think.
I know some of you have already attended the Open Meetings Act training. I know I have at MML, at the summer conference. I recently sent our new town clerk to the Open Meetings Act training, because there have been some updates and changes to legislation that we need to be aware of, so we always stay in compliance of the Open Meetings Act.
So, good evening. I'm going to give the presentation on the Open Meetings Act updates. Staff decided to pursue this as an administrative item because we have received several memos from the state of Maryland talking about the updates. And as Kathy mentioned, or Ms. Willits, I did attend the Open Meetings training in October. So, first, I want to give a brief, a very brief background on the act for any public members that may not be aware of the act. And please note that this is a very brief background of the act. There's a lot more to it and a lot of legal regulations, and if anyone is interested in hearing more about it, the Maryland Attorney General has a lot of great information on their website and the manual. So, what is the Open Meetings Act? It's an act that requires public business be conducted openly with reasonable advanced notice in a reasonably accessible public location. Essentially, the act makes sure the public is able to see the decision-making process of the government. So, not every gathering of town members falls under the Open Meetings Act. The Maryland General, or the Maryland Attorney General recommends three kind of tests to see if something does fall under the guidelines of the act, and they are quorum, public body and meeting. So, for quorum, that's the majority of members on a committee or commission. For our Board of Commissioners, that would be three members. So, for them to have a meeting, there has to be at least three members present. For other committees, it is referenced in the town code what the quorum is, and if a quorum exists, the meeting may fall under the Open Meetings Act rules if the other two following things apply. so the quorum, to discuss public business. And that is important. When I was reading up on the act, this could be, so, there could be accidental meetings. For instance, if three of our board members find themselves at Jubilee shopping and they start talking, it doesn't apply to the act. But as soon as they start discussing public business, the act rules would apply because there's a quorum, there's three people, they're a public body, and they're discussing public business. A new concern with the Open Meetings Act is electronic communication, such as email, phone calls, text or group messages. The Maryland Attorney General advises public bodies to be cautious when using the reply all email response because it could be considered discussion based on how quickly members respond, etc. Suggests FYI. And the Court of Appeals has said that a public body consideration of public business includes all phases of its deliberation, not just the end voting process. So, the discussion also is included. We should be careful with how we present ourselves outside of meetings and in meetings. Something that I saw on the website was if we are using our cell phones, which I think Commissioner O'Donnell has mentioned in meetings, someone could, a resident could think that there's a public, or there's discussion going on behind the scenes, maybe like texting, when the board is having a meeting. Also, they said the same thing for no passing. We just want to make sure that the public is aware of discussions. Common causes of violations, according to the Maryland Attorney General, unplanned meetings, lack of members, member turnover, member desire to control information, lack of knowledge about the act requirements, and lack of agenda planning. These are the most common violations. As you can see, most of these are straightforward and simple reasons, but sometimes it's the simple things we kind of forget about. So... And if a resident or public member thinks they see a violation, there's two main ways that they can make a complaint. The first method, a complaint would be filed to the Compliance Board, and the board would review the case, ask for an explanation from the public body, then issue a formal opinion. No penalties are issued. The method is strictly for educational purposes in hopes of the error not occurring again. And then the second method is the circuit court. So, they, under this method, penalties can be issued. It's 250 for the first violation, and then 1,000 for each violation following within a three-year period. Steps to avoid complaints, these were recommended, again, by the Attorney General. Identify the person responsible for various compliance tasks. Include tasks and job descriptions. Adopt schedule for training. Plan meeting topics. Discuss items openly and respond promptly to complaints if there are any. Okay. So, now for the updates. So, effective October 1st, 2017, each public entity subject to the Open Meetings Act must designate at least one employee officer or member to receive training on the requirements of the act. Once a person is designated, training must take place within 90 days. Training received before October 1st, 2013 does not qualify. I checked with the Academy of Excellence, at least their records, and they said, for our Board of Commissioners, they did not have anything between the October 1st, 2013 date and today's date for our board. And as of October 1st, a public body may not meet in a closed session that is subject to the act unless the public body has a designated member in attendance. They are aware that sometimes people are sick or may not be able to attend the meeting. So, if the designated person cannot attend the meeting, they just require that a compliance checklist is completed and then attached to the minutes. And for documents, we are not required to submit anything to the Compliance Board saying that we've made a designation and had the training. We just need to keep in-house records saying that we do have someone and we did train them. There, sorry. There's three ways to receive training. First, there is an online class through the University of Maryland's Institute for Governmental Service and Research. There is a class offered by the Maryland Municipal League, which is known as the Academy for Excellence in Government. And then the third option is a class offered by the Maryland Association of Education through the Boardmanship Academy Program.
PDL. PDL.
These are the items that will be taught at the training. So, the basics, the purpose of the Open Meetings Act, how to determine when the act applies, the ground rules, when and how a public body can close a meeting, what minutes and other documents are required, and how it is enforced. And then, while we are discussing openness in meetings, I also attended the Effective Meetings class offered by the Academy of Excellence within the past couple of weeks. And from what they were talking about, I believe there are a few things that we could apply to make our meetings more open, possibly. I know that the attorney that taught the class recommended having specific agenda times and setting an informal meeting end time. He kind of recommended those for making a meeting more open because then the public can be more aware of when certain items are being discussed. So, they would know, oh, between 7:45 and 8 o'clock, the board will be discussing this agenda item. Also, it allows residents, well, the hope is to, to get more residents to come to the meetings by having specific times. So, they don't have to sit through the whole meeting. They can kind of choose, oh, this is the agenda item I'm really interested in. I'm going to come during this time to see what they're talking about. And then again, if anyone is looking for more information, the Maryland Attorney General website has a lot of great information, and that's the website. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Was there any mention of future training meetings beyond MML during the summer?
I've been asking for them to update me.
Okay.
A lot of that. They have had one or two, but they're pretty far away. I think one was in Easton, Maryland, which is about two hours from here. So, I'm hoping there will be some closer. And I've asked the personnel at the Academy of Excellence to keep me updated of when the classes are.
Great. Okay.
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
The very first year I was elected, way back when, there was a class offer down the, at City of Frederick. And it was basically for Western Maryland officials. They could get something there, like centrally located, that would be so much easier for ourselves and other people who live out the Western Maryland section to actually come to Frederick and try to get this out of the way.
Yeah.
And they could just make an agreement to at least do that.
That's a good idea.
I know Legit offers it sometimes, too. So, hopefully, maybe we can get, if we get with some other municipalities that need it, too.
Imagine we're not the only municipality in Western Maryland needs us. So, I mean...
No, we're not.
Comment, Mr. Swinney? Anybody?
Then we could offer them a meeting area. We have the visitor center out there that we can use for a meeting area for this thing. Or we have the Emmits Building here that can be used for a meeting thing.
Or our room, yeah. Sure.
And we have rooms here. The municipalities can come in here.
Oh, nice. Okay. So, if, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Finish.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Ms. Shaw, just to clarify for me. So, when we have one of our closed meeting sessions here, as long as we fill out a certain checklist, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
So, with the act updates, you would have to have your designated person in attendance during the closed meeting. If for whatever reason they aren't able to attend, you're required to do the checklist.
So, you would be our designated...
Well, you could have, both Ms. Shaw and I are both designate, we both have been to the training. But my recommendation would be that at least somebody on your board needs to receive this training as well.
And that can be done online, right? That's what I saw on that slide.
Yeah, there is a class online. I have to find out more information about it, but they did say that that's an option.
So, if we go that way, if, sorry, rather, if we go the direction of offering to use
our town, our facility, our building, let me back up. Please offer to them that we would be willing to offer our building or somewhere in the immediate area to accommodate them if that would encourage them to come to present the class. Does that make sense?
Yes.
You went pretty far backwards that first time, wasn't you? Okay.
I got you, though.
Any other comments you need to add related to this item?
We do need to designate someone out eventually.
Okay.
Or soon, because the updates went into effect last month.
Okay. All right.
If you can find out the information about the online thing, you know, so some of us maybe can do that. Because we did, I did the planning and zoning certifications here at the office when I had to get before the planning zoning.
Okay.
I'd gladly log in and do it.
Okay. So, we're good? All right. So, we now turn to a consent agenda item. We have one resignation and one appointment. Do we need a vote to accept a resignation? Or do we just acknowledge we accept it?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So, at this time, we've been advised that we have the resignation of Brian Neville from the Citizens Advisory Committee. And we now have in front of us an appointment for Frank Davis to the Planning Commission. His term would be from January 2nd, 2018 to July 2nd, 2022. Is there a motion to accept Mr. Davis, appoint Mr. Davis to the Planning Commission?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Frank Davis to the Planning Commission.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Very good. The motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. It's been seconded by Commissioner Blanchard. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone against? Say nay. There are no nays. The motion carries five to zero. Very good. Thank you. At this time, we now turn to the Treasurer, Mr. Blanchard, for the Treasurer's report.
All right, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Treasury report, Town of Emmitsburg cash activity as of October 31st, 2017. $5,261,252 cash balance, October 1st, 2017. $5,475,217 operating balance forward. And as always, you have the top 10 check amounts, the vendor names, descriptions, the check dates, etc.
Great. Okay. Any questions for the Treasurer related to any of these check items or other treasury-related items?
No question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ritz, sorry.
First check amount for the water line work?
Mm-hmm. For the square? Water line work that was done up North Seaton?
That's at Square, not at Flat Run.
No.
Because I know there was some discussion.
Right. That's still in discussions.
Okay. Good. Good. I thought that that was for that. All right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments related to the Treasurer's report?
Yes, one more.
Yes, sir.
How are the invoices coming along for the neglect of the conduit and such that were broken?
They're not. I've been in talks with our town attorney.
Okay.
So, we're standing on top of it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. We move forward now to Planning Commission report.
Yes, as Ms. Sipery had stated earlier in her Planner's Report, we, the Planning Commission discussed short-term home rentals or discussed, just discussion on some of the, we have maybe several places in town here that might fall underneath that, this category, which we don't have in our town code. And we had a lengthy discussion on it and discussed everything. And we haven't decided anything yet. She was looking into the information or getting some more information. Other than that, that's all we did. Ms. Sipery, do you have anything else you wanted to add on that?
Nope. You stated it well.
Okay. Very good. All right. So, we now turn to our agenda items. And we now turn to agenda item number two, the Catoctinettes Incorporated request for an April 2018 6K fundraiser race. Hey, good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
If you could identify yourself, your address, and the floor is yours.
Yes. My name is Kristin Miller. My address is unknown here because I live in Pennsylvania. And actually, my daughter is a member of the Catoctinettes. As many of you know, we have been in existence...
You still need your address.
Oh. It is PO Box 423 in Arnsville, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
14 Victor Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Catoctinettes, who, as many of you know, has been in existence for 40 years here in Emmitsburg. And obviously, many organizations are looking for different ways to raise funds and also be a part of the community. The numbers in our organization, of course, are becoming smaller. Baton, many, many years ago, was very large. And I know a lot of my family members have said, oh, gosh, we did that many, many moons ago. So, a year and a half ago, my daughter and I came here to Emmitsburg and started to, she participated in Baton. So, again, we've been looking at different ways to try to raise funds and bring the Catoctinettes to more light here in the area. I am a former recreation major slash physical education major. So, the core leader had approached me to organize a 5K. I, myself, am an avid runner, so I enjoy going to different places and doing this. So, it will promote, obviously, health and friendly competition here, as you know, with the Turkey Trot coming up. And I have some friends who participate in that as well. This is a beautiful area to be able to do that, and that's why we are coming here to try and see if that's something we can do as well. On page 19, I have of your agenda, I had submitted a letter to Mayor Briggs, you, the Commissioners, as well as the town manager, relative to participate, having the event on Saturday, April 21st, would be our first choice, if possible, which is also, well, Saturday, April 14th would be a second date. The advent times, as you can see there, would be starting the race at 8 o'clock in the morning, and estimated time of end would be at 9:30. What I'd like to be able to do, and you can also see with the item that has been submitted for the race course, would be starting here at the community building, much like the Turkey Trot. We're looking at doing a 6K, just to add a little bit, something different. And it'll follow pretty much primarily the same course, with the exception of, I want to try and minimize the amount of time that we would have to be on any main roadways here in the town. We'd start here at the community building, go up towards the old Emmitsburg Road, turn onto Scott Road. I can, you can see there in the map. What I'd like to be able to do, though, is when we enter Main Street, instead of going down Main Street and creating more of a backlog with traffic, is actually come into the alley. Come down the alley and then end in the community park where, at, oh, I'm sorry?
No, when you finish, I have a question.
Okay. At this point, we are in the, just the very planning stages of it, obviously, waiting for approval, if we're able to do that. And then we'll be able to move forward with any other ideas. As far as the promotion of the race, I have a twin brother who actually organizes a race in Westminster, Maryland, a very successful race. So, I will be looking at him, as well as my partner, Tina, whose daughter is also in Baton, to organize the race and possibly add some other entities to it to bring the community out, not just the running community, but the community as a whole. So, that's where we're at.
Okay. Ms. Swinney, you have a question?
Yes. I'm very excited if we can change this date.
Okay.
We have a Community Day, Heritage Day here, and we are looking for a race.
Okay.
I thought we was going to have one last year.
Right.
But we're looking for someone to do a 5K race or so.
Right.
For the community that day. And when the time slot fits perfect with our Community Day, because it starts at 6:00 in the morning and ends up to 10:00 PM at nighttime, but we have activities all through the day.
At the one in June, that we participate in the parade?
I'm in the parade, yes.
Okay.
You'd be in the parade in the evening, but the 5K race would be nice for, to fit in our program in the morning, which we do have, don't have anything going on.
Oh, okay.
At 8 o'clock in the morning to 9:30.
Okay.
Because I think the bikes start after that, usually are after, in the afternoon. Last year, you had them in the morning some.
There's, typically, there's a bike ride at 9:00 and 10:00. And then there is the bike rodeo in town, and then there are bike rides that follow the same route later in the day.
Yeah. It would be, if it fitted with that.
There's no conflict.
Wouldn't be any conflict.
We have a Community Day, Heritage Day here, and we are looking for a race.
Okay.
We thought we was going to have one last year. But we're looking for someone to do a 5K race or so for the community that day, and when the time slot fits perfect with our Community Day, because it starts at 6:00 in the morning and ends up to 10:00 PM at nighttime, but we have activities all through the day.
At the one in June that we participate in the parade?
I'm in the parade, yes, it is. You'll be in the parade in the evening, but the 5K race would be nice for, to fit in our program in the morning, which we do have, don't have anything going on.
Oh, okay.
At 8:00 in the morning to 9:30.
Okay.
Because I think the bikes start after that, usually are after, in the afternoon. Last year, you had them in the morning some.
There is, typically, there's a bike ride at 9:00 and 10:00, and then there is the bike rodeo in town, and then there are bike rides that follow the same route later in the day and afternoon, so.
Yeah, it would be, if it fit in a conflict with that.
There's no conflict.
Wouldn't be any conflict, and there'd be food and water and everything here, and it'd be, you know, part of that celebration, maybe bring more people. More people will participate in the event probably, you know, for registration.
Yes. Now, is that something, too, with it being a partner to the Heritage Days, is that something we can still operate as a fundraiser for our organization? Okay, so that would not be any type of conflict of interest or anything?
Have vendors.
Okay.
Have vendors and stuff for that. They have their own stuff, and you're welcome to do whatever you wish with your race.
Okay.
And the more people you get into it, the better our Community Day will be.
Absolutely. Well, and I come from the more is, less is more, I'll call it. I've been involved in many, many races around, and a lot of times, it can be cost prohibitive for folks. So what I'm looking at doing is trying to offer this at a minimal rate, being able to talk with the American Legion. I am a Legion member, not here, well, not here in Emmitsburg, but my husband served, and would like to be able to see if we can get some of the community organizations to help out as well. We actually were talking about last year, after we had left, why don't we do like some kind of stand at the Heritage Days? Again, I'm very new to this, only being involved with the organization for a year and a half. So that's something definitely we, I will bring back to the organization to see if we can do that as that date.
You're welcome to do that, too. Lemonade and stuff will do really well, because we don't have anybody that does that.
Well, see, I, snowballs. We actually, yeah, we, in Big Levo, I happened to go to the market the one day, and the girls were selling, the softball team was selling snowballs for a dollar, and I thought, why don't we do that at the Community Days?
We don't have anybody that does lemonade, ice tea.
Fantastic, fantastic.
That would do really well, and you're welcome to do that. And if you bring it to the, it's always the last Saturday in June.
Yes, sir.
So if you participate in that event, we will not, probably will not charge you for your stand because you're doing an actual activity in there.
Wonderful. Well, and that too...
Anything to help our community out.
Wonderful.
Bring everybody together.
Well, and that, too, would be my, and asking you, what types of permits, requirements, things we would need to do. Obviously, we'd be using the roadway out here if there is any type of permit required for the closure of the road or at least using part of the road. Again, that's something that we would have to discuss. I personally, unfortunately, have not been here for the Turkey Trot, but I have friends who have participated in it, and actually, the one gentleman, Jim, has volunteered to help us. I actually run in an organization up in the Gettysburg area. On Wednesdays, you can see us, about 100 members strong going out and running for three to five miles, and there's probably about 500 on Facebook that follow the Gettysburg organization. We also have another gal in the club who has, her husband runs with an organization down in the Frederick area, the Steeple Chasers. So we have quite the area, quite the people we can get that information out to, so.
Well, usually our police force, usually, we have such a wonderful police force here.
And Ashley?
They follow our bicyclists and stuff.
I have a business card.
The White House and them do a wonderful job here, and they bring other people to help them with, and they, to help follow the races and make sure everybody's safe and everything, too. So I'm sure we can work something out.
Okay.
And we have a Community Heritage Day meeting every third Monday of the month at the American Legion.
Okay.
Just a couple of things for clarification. Number one, I would say, very likely for the board, we would love to have this, and we would love to see the Catoctinettes get all the support they deserve on this. As a start-finish line, you have the start in Memorial Park, and you have either an arrow for the finish line or what looks like a finish line over...
What we would like to do is finish it in the community park.
Okay, all right.
Again, bringing it down the alley and finishing in the community park so that we're keeping it off the main road.
Sure.
Not suggesting cutting, not suggesting closing the roads down on the back portion. We would have folks out there helping with...
A couple quirks that happen with the management of the Turkey Trot. We typically, when we start in community park, the impulse is to cross right there, so at South Seaton, so just literally outside the building, people want to go to the sidewalk in front of the FEMA facility and the Daughters facility. They follow that to the end of the sidewalk, and then the sidewalk literally takes them to the shoulder. And then there's sort of this sort of amok moment where, where do we go? So marshals, I would suggest, if you could, you know, identify who your marshals would be and prep them with the deputy prior to basically put them up the shoulder, and then at the top of the hill, that's usually considered the safest spot for crossing. We've had success with that when we've had the running of the Turkey Trot again. Once they're on Old Emmitsburg, once they turn right onto Scott Road and Annandale, it's usually pretty safe. The deputies, like Mr. Sweeney just said, the deputies are very accommodating, so they will do what's necessary to keep the runners safe. Just, they will need advanced notice based on the numbers and the length of the event. It's been my experience that the field tends to pull itself out, like what you're identifying is a five-mile course, like what's shown here. The field tends to string out, so there's never like a clot of runners that's blocking. So I think that's an advantage to a point. Coming up Annandale Road, the ascent, typically, people are on the with-traffic side of the road. I don't know if that's something you want to give consideration to. And then more often than not, people will literally run on the sidewalk down toward the square and then turn right as opposed to using the alleys. Now, that's the Turkey Trot course. It doesn't mean that has to be your course, but that's where they've, they've had their successes. The other side, incentive-wise, if you wanted to add a second event, just throwing it out there, a Main Street mile, just prior to the parade, you have everybody in town lined up on Main Street, have everyone on a mad dash down the street. Why not? If it's a full mile, well, I'm not quite sure where in the community park you'd end up. If you did a half mile or less, it would put you in front of a bar, the Oath House, just saying, you know? You know, people need refreshments.
I'm a member of the Gettysburg Beer Runners, so you're right up my alley. I'm sorry.
No, a recovery drink is always important after...
Absolutely, there is water in it.
Okay, so those are some things that might be considered, and that would be parade kickoff at 6:00, so...
Yeah, the parades are earlier, 5:00.
At 5:00, okay, so between 4:30 and 5:00, and then off they go, and shortly after that, the parade follows. And that's something that I was trying to...
We were trying to do last year.
Do last year, but...
Oh, okay.
This is a win.
We were hoping to have a race last year, but we didn't. We didn't get it together.
If it fits your fundraising timetable, I think it strikes me you would have potentially a larger turnout for the Community Day event.
Yes.
But a standalone in the spring is a second event. If you want to warm up, we'd be happy to see that also.
Okay.
So, you know, three events potentially. But nevertheless, board, survey, anybody have any issues or concerns related to this? Okay, so staff, related to utilizing town facilities, park, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, if it's attached to Heritage Days, they won't have to do anything. If it's a standalone event, you'll have to get, if you're going to use the park, you'll need to reserve the park pavilion, which our receptionist or our office manager can help you with that.
And as far as restroom facilities, when do they open for the season?
That's a good question. Usually when it starts getting warmer. It would be open by, I would, we would make sure it was open by then, or, which we did in the past, was donate two porta-pots to the Turkey Trot, which we've done in the past. That would be up to the board whether or not they wanted to do that again, so.
Okay.
Now, it might be silly, but I'll ask you to address your questions to the board, and staff will comment on it.
Certainly.
Sorry, but procedure. Okay, so anything else we need to throw in, advisory-wise?
No, and there'd be no need to close South Seaton, so you wouldn't need a state highway permit for that, because when I've, and I have, I've run it before, that when they come out, they should, and this is the way that I ran it the one year, and I don't know if it's changed, they stay in the, like, South Seaton runs north and south, so they stay in the south lane out towards...
Stargables.
Thank you.
Okay.
With it being blocked off here, so it's, if it's a deputy, if it's a marshal, whoever it is, blocks it here, that's the beginning part. That's where you're going to have your masses. It's not going to, you know, it'll separate some, but not a lot until it gets off of that. So there wouldn't be a need for a road closure for South Seaton.
Great, okay.
And I think that...
But other than that, there's not a whole lot from the town.
Fire police, yeah, that was what I was saying.
Our fire police is very, very helpful in town. They help us with all the parades and everything, and they would help with also Community Day.
Okay.
They closed the alleys and stuff for us when we did the history tours on the horse and buggy, and they also did the parade for us.
Okay.
So they would, if you're part of the Community Day, they'd be all connected together.
Well, I've also...
Just give them the times they need to close.
Oh, sure, and I've also thought about race support in the event that we would have, an injury or...
We have first aid facilities there, the ambulance company and fire company, well, they're merged now, so they will be there with the first aid station already set in the community park for Community Day.
Wonderful.
So regarding a board vote, when we hear a final proposal with a date, you need a board vote to accept this activity? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm assuming you're not going to make your decision tonight about the timing?
I will go back to my organization, which tomorrow evening, I will have a vast majority of folks that I can speak with and mention to them, because again, as you know, we do participate in the parade, and we've mentioned about being a part of the Heritage Days. So to me, it kind of makes sense. It does, so I appreciate you pointing that out, and I will speak with them, Tina and I will speak with them this, tomorrow evening about that.
Now, another run was talking to us about that. No, 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 all right, so if in a perfect world, you have a decision in place, if you could visit us again next month on December 5th, which is a Tuesday, if that's possible, and if it's not, we understand. But we meet typically the first Monday of each month, so if you could come back to the board and just say, this is the date that we choose, we would take a vote on it. Does she need to be here to make this request, or is this something that you come from staff?
No, I mean, if she would send it all in writing, or like she did the packet before, she wouldn't have to. You guys have asked all your questions that you needed. Obviously, if she goes with Heritage Days, and she's going to want to work with Commissioner Sweeney on that, and then I would encourage her to reach out to, or your organization